Public Works on Public Health and Safety Disregard Committee, or take real call please.
Alderman Sorentino.
Here.
Alderman Messina, Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Have a forum. Any motion approved amendments of July 23rd?
I make the motion.
Second. Corrections, changes, anything? All in favor? Aye. Any polls? Motion carries. Port of recognition, response to traffic complaint. Greg, you want to take this one?
Yeah, I'll kind of walk through a quick summary of this. The document's kind of long, so hopefully everyone got a chance to review it. We get different traffic complaints throughout town. Some will come through Alderman, some come through city administration, some come through resident meetings. You name it, we get it a number of ways, and we kind of didn't have a consistent way of dealing with each of those. So, the police department and the public works department got together and tried to develop a comprehensive response to these traffic complaints that happened throughout town. This document is kind of a guiding document, a, you know, not necessarily set in stone. For instance, if we think there's a safety problem out on any side street at any time, it doesn't mean we have to go through a three. We can go send squads out there and still do our directed patrol if need be. We're not going to sacrifice safety if we know there's something we have to address right away. But basically what we're looking at is, once we get complaints from residents, however those come through, is the first thing we'd like to do is do a, basically a covert traffic study, not with the speed awareness sign, not with anything else. We have a radar-based system that mounts to a pole, and it's not even one of those loops that goes across the road. Basically, people, you don't even realize it's there, but what it does is it measures traffic volume and traffic speed. It'll kind of give us an unbiased view of what's really going on out there. You don't have someone slowing down just because of speed signs there, or sometimes kids speeding up because of speed signs there, but really giving us a good picture of that. When we look at those results, then, kind of a commonly accepted practice is the 85th percentile of speed kind of guides. Studies have shown that about 85% of the cars travel at an appropriate speed for where they're going, 15%, you know, exceed that at some point. So, for instance, if, what we're looking at for a guideline to determine if there really is a speeding problem there, and it doesn't mean that there's never a speeder, but if there's a speeding problem, is if 85% of the cars are going five miles an hour or more over the speed limit. So, what we do is take that data, look at it. This thing gives a really nice printout showing everything as far as the data, where the 85th, the 50th percentile, the 85th percentile. And based on that, we would provide those results to the Alderman of the area and the resident that complained, regardless of what actions taken after that, just to kind of give them a picture of what's going on. So, the thought is, once we deal with that and we're above or below five miles an hour over the speed limit, if it's below and there's not necessarily a problem identified, then what we would still look to do is, at that point, based on the resident concerns, you know, maybe put the speed awareness sign over there, do some directed patrol, still trying to, you know, address some of those concerns, but maybe not to the point of moving towards preventative measures as much as like a speed bump or traffic calming type thing. Now, if it's over, if the 85th percentile is over five over the limit, what we're looking to do is, at that point, try and deploy some traffic calming measures, and doing it first with the speed awareness signs and directed extra patrols over there. What we do is, you know, throughout the, throughout the city, we get a number of spots that are reported as problematic or places that we know. We kind of have these on a rotating, you know, traffic detail of the week that we have officers be visible in the certain areas, because they can't be visible for hours a day in every single area of town. You've got to rotate it some. So, trying that and trying public education to slow people down. After we do that for a period of time, we'd like to reexamine the area with another covert traffic. And covert, it just means not secret, just so people aren't aware that it's going on. And then look at the data again. If cars are still averaging more than five miles an hour over the speed limit, then we would look to reach out to the residents and see, is there an interest for some type of either, you know, some roads, there might be some possibilities for, you know, reengineering down the road, some traffic calming measures, but primarily looking at, at that point, do they, are they interested in some type of temporary speed bump to be put on their street? The problem with the speed bump surveys we get back a lot of times is, you might have 30 people on a street, and sometimes you get, you know, five or six people that respond on some of these surveys that go out. So, what we'd be looking for is, we really need to have a decent amount of the residents wanting the temporary speed bumps put in, because if you put them in and you don't have that input, then we hear the complaining of the people that didn't want them. So, really trying to get a good feel from the residents, and if we get what we said is a threshold of 60% of the people saying, yep, we want to try them for a summer, then we would go ahead and put them in. We would be looking for, these things can start January, February, March, deciding if we're going to put them in, but we had looked at an initial deadline of, if we don't have action at the council level to put in speed bumps by June 15th, really, we're kind of getting to the point that we're not going to be able to put them in that year, because once you get into, if you're not putting them until August or September, you're pulling them out by November, you're not really getting a good three- or four-month period for people to actually experience them and decide, do we want them in there? But once we were able to get a season of three to six months in there, depending how long it is, then we would resurvey the residents and again ask for a majority of residents to say they want some type of more permanent solution. The more permanent solution probably wouldn't be the smaller speed humps, but would be something that would be prepared for in the budget and similar to that's on Mary Jane or, you know, the Edgebrook area, or I'm sorry, the Forest View and Harvey area or Windsor that you have right now that are more of speed humps, not just speed bumps. You know, the temporary speed ones, obviously, they cause problems with the, not only do they eventually come loose, but in the winter, you can't plow with those out there. So, that's kind of the guidelines we came up with. You'll see in the document. Matt came up with some guidelines of looking at other people's policies. And, you know, you can't put them in, there's some MUTCD guidelines, you can't put them within certain, so close to an intersection or a driveway or, you know, a curve or a hill. So, really, this document tries to lay a plan for that. And then we kind of also addressed the addition of, we get a lot of requests for additional signage. Deaf child, children at play, slow children playing, whatever it is. And, you know, that usually will placate residents for the meantime that they think, but the studies that are out there really say that it really does no good and drivers just ignore those signs. So, we like to be responsive to what citizens want, so we've put some of those in. But really, studies have shown, and I did a lot of research on it, that they really don't do anything. And as a matter of fact, Illinois and many other states came out with guidance that they recommend that you do not do it. If there's a park in the area, then it's okay to put it, you know, park ahead or whatever, but the general children playing, you know, is not recommended. And then lastly, from our city code, we kind of put in there the guidelines for installing stop signs or yield signs. You know, council can always make a decision to say, well, we think this one fits. It kind of fits the guidelines, but we wanted to include what's in city code into this policy too. So, it's all one document of what are our tra, when we have traffic complaints, what are some solutions out there? It'll give staff kind of a consistency as to how to handle them. City council, when they're talking to their constituents, they can also relate that, well, we have this, this policy now and this guideline that we're, you know, we've made a decision as a city to kind of follow it, and it gives you a chance to really follow those guidelines and be able to, we're trying to avoid the initial thing going to the top level to try and solve a traffic complaint, and we're trying to just really identify first, is there really a traffic problem over there? So, we're looking for guidance or some feedback on this, if there's any questions. And, you know, I don't think we really need a motion to put it into place, but, because it's kind of an internal policy, but everyone would kind of follow these guidelines, so.
I, I see no problem in it, but will Mr. Jacob have a question?
A couple of questions. On page nine of the packet, item number six, it says, "The area will not undergo another traffic study for a period of two years." I mean, I really think that's excessive, because, I mean, if there's still, if the residents still feel there's a problem the following year, I'm not sure why we would wait two years.
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about this extensively when both Chief and I went over this. I guess the thought process was, it is somewhat time-consuming for the police department to be able to deploy their different devices out there. And once the answer is made, we don't, I guess, one of our thoughts was, we shouldn't just keep going back and dealing with the same issue over and over. If we, if we deem that it's not a warrantable thing to move to the next step, because it didn't meet the criteria. And that's what, and that's kind of why we set up a lot of these criterias, is that to, to show us whether or not it's a, an ongoing problem, whether it's a problem or whether it's perception.
And, you know, to kind of add to that, we did kind of put a disclaimer unless conditions in the area have changed significantly. Certainly, you know, if something with the new 390 changes traffic patterns through town, or a major, you know, a reconstruction project causes problems, we would do it. And it doesn't mean that we wouldn't be during those two years still having that location in our rotation of things. You know, two years was kind of a, most traffic conditions don't usually change year to year. If there was a place that we had to go out earlier, I mean, we could still, still look at doing that.
Go ahead, Mr. Jacob.
Another question that, we, I mean, we had this study done on Hemlock, and we already approved doing the speed bump there. So, this, this is going to be going forward from the time we approve this, correct? It's not going to affect the people we already told will get a speed bump?
That speed bump went in on a temporary basis, and we haven't done the, the secondary, asking if they want it as, on a, for a permanent basis yet. We were kind of waiting to see how this plan of attack went through. Also, using some of the criterias that we have in here, it's going to be somewhat difficult to put a, a speed bump in there. One of the issues that we're seeing over there is, there's two vacant properties that are for sale, I believe, on the east, or, excuse me, the west side of this street. If do, if those two properties do get developed, the 20 feet in between driveways and the speed hump may become a problematic area for us. But we haven't done the final mailer out to those residents to see whether or not they are in favor of permanent speed bump yet.
Follow up?
Yep, follow up. You're thinking of Edgewood, I'm asking about the one on Hemlock, where we have the people here for next year. We, we told them there was going to be the temporary speed bumps. Edgewood, Edgewood, I wasn't, because Edgewood is the street you're talking about.
I apologize. Yeah, I guess that would be a decision that would have to be made by the council, if they want to go along with that, or if they want to follow the criteria that are based upon in the, in the, in the document.
Mr. Jacob.
I guess a question for the mayor. I mean, if we've already voted for that, that they're going to get them, we're now going to tell them, no, we are no longer going to do that?
That was on Hemlock.
Mayor, please.
It was one, is that the one where we got five responses or something?
Yes.
It was three yeses and two nos?
I believe that may have been it. There wasn't a lot, there wasn't the majority of people on the block responding to that one.
Well, if we already told them, right, we sent out, I'm sure we sent out a message that we were going to do it, right?
That one was going to be put in next spring for a temporary basis?
And that one would go in.
Right.
But then, but then, once we go to find out if they want a permanent one, then it's going to have to go to the criteria.
Yeah, and I think.
But it's just a temporary.
Man, Mr. York.
Me and Chief talked about this one, I believe, also, that we were going to go out and do some of these before we actually put the speed bump in, kind of walk through the criteria on, on that street as well to see. So, we have the baselines before we go into the actual speed bump. Whereas with this new, with this new plan, we would go through the criteria. If it didn't meet the criteria, it would never come back to the council to say that we're going to install speed bumps in that area. It would just kind of die because it doesn't meet the criteria. We were still going to walk through the criteria steps, so we'd have that as a baseline data, so that when we put the temporary one in, we would kind of know where we're at with the whole process.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you guys will still be advised of it, but we wouldn't put it on an agenda to, if it doesn't even come close to meeting the criteria, we wouldn't put it on an agenda to be voted on, because it, it doesn't fit. We'd still provide the, obviously, the Alderman in that area with the report of what we found, and the complaining residents, so.
I'm going to call on Tony, your AS3, so.
Thank you. On the electronic speed signs, what is the feedback on those, the ones that?
Very positive.
Very positive.
Yeah, we've had a lot of good response for it, so.
And how many do we have of those?
We have a speed awareness trailer, and then we have the portable sign, which is the one that's really been, you know, effective, because it has a message based upon how fast they're going. And I believe probably about a month and a half ago, there was a request for how much those cost, so that was put in the packet to.
Do we know what the cost of speed bumps and the difference between the cost and installing those speed bumps, or humps?
Yeah, the speed bumps are about $800 is what it would cost to do a location. They're about $200 and some dollars apiece, and we'd need three to four of them per location.
Okay. And, and those electronic signs, how much are those going for?
Depending on what size you get, really, in the three to, $3,000 to $4,500 range. It depends on what options you get. I think one of the options in there too was, I know someone had wanted to look at some more permanency for some of those.
Right.
There was a solar panel that could be used with those two for about $600 that would provide constant.
Okay.
So, if there was a spot that council decided they wanted to put one of those in on a more regular basis, that could be done too.
And in order to do that, to put one of those permanently in one of the neighborhoods, what process do we have to go through?
Well, I was just going to say, if, if there's requests for that and there's a desire, we'd like to get a couple more of those signs, and that would be a part of the budget process as it comes up, because we'd probably be looking at, if we get two to three, you know, eight to $11,000 in costs that we would put into next year's budget and then bring it forward to council.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to, if at all possible, in lieu of a blanket cancellation of these additional non-regulation signs, based on the federal and state studies, which I personally don't agree with the disabled signs, I'd like to keep that as an open case-by-case basis for any disabled citizen on a block. In lieu of, it states here the ineffectiveness, and people may move and go away, and it's not legal, but there is some sense of safety to the individual.
I, I guess just my comment on that is more for the, if you have a blind or autistic or something like that, definitely more the just slow children playing sign.
Right.
That one's the one that really seems to be causing the issues in a lot of places. But certainly, if there's a special condition in the area, a deaf child or something, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to that. But just putting slow children playing signs on every street, it, they just, it doesn't seem to be effective, so.
I only bring it up because in here, it specifically talks about other word messages, dealing with children such as autistic, blind, or deaf child are not recommended. I would argue that point and keep that as an open case-by-case basis, that you could have a conversation with the family member at the time.
We could make that a note.
Yeah, so I think what we could do is just add a sign or a portion of this, just talking about, those will be decided on a case-by-case basis, but the general slow children playing.
Right.
We're, we're going to kind of probably not do those on a regular basis.
Right.
We'll add a sentence in there.
Mr. Jacob, do you have another question?
No, I think we've answered.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, going back to the temporary one next year. I mean, I could tell you, we got the speed humps on my block, and a lot of people did not reply, and they wanted them taken out afterwards, because we don't like them. Did you vote? No. So, I think by going the percentage route, we'll, we'll take care of this problem. And the ones that want it, they'll actually get the neighbors to come out and send, or, they don't have to come out, they just have to send a letter in. The question for me is, Chief, is one of the elected officials going to call you and say, hey, we got a problem in the area, and then you're just going to go right into the routine here? How's that going to work? Sure, yeah, and that's kind of how it works now, is it'll come through Matt or it'll come through me, through an elected, or I might be at a homeowner's meeting and it comes up. So, what'll happen is, if we get one of these that's, that raises to the level that, you know, not just a, hey, we're having a little bit of problem here, but, you know, it's one that someone's, wants to look at, should we have speed bumps, should we have something else? Then we'll enact this procedure and follow it, so. But yeah, if, if you tell me, then we'll handle it from there.
There, you have a four.
So, basically, you're going to do the covert study for a week, you said? It was a week? So, let's say we get four or five requests, we'll be able to handle that in a year, right? Oh, sure, yeah, we'll be able to do several, so. Okay, just, you know, and then, again, that becomes a budget issue. If they all need them, speed humps or whatever, that's a different story.
Mr. Jacob.
I just want clarification. We are putting the temporary ones on Hemlock, which we already promised.
I believe they said they will go in.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
We already committed to that one, it needs to go in.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? So, are you just looking for approval to move forward with this?
Yeah, I mean, really, it's an operating policy, but we want you guys to be on board with this, and then we'll provide you with the final copy of it, and then, you know, I, we're not going to be afraid to share it with the resident either, because they got to know, you know, the procedure and that we're actually not just, we're actually following something, so.
Could we make it as a resolution or ordinance?
Yeah, we can officially adopt it, that's fine.
All right, so I need most, so I, I'll make the motion, adopt.
By a resolution?
By a resolution, traffic complaint, operation?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. All right. Item number two, stop sign at Hanson Court. Hanson Court was one of the new streets that went in for the El Joa Hare, am I right?
That's correct.
Okay, and this street is between the Marriott Hotel and what is the other building over there? Fresh my memory.
Industrial.
Industrial.
Yeah, industrial building. So, basically, the Hanson Court now runs from Wooddale Road to AEC. By ordinance, it's not listed in the, as a covered location for a stop sign. You know, the city manager can authorize a temporary stop sign for six months at a time before it comes to council. These two stop signs right now have actually been put in by the construction company that is constructing it. So, I want to have this in place before the road is officially turned over to the city. The people are following it now, but we just need to, you know, officially put it on the books, so that's why that's coming to you.
Okay, I, I agree with the stop signs. I did go up there. We definitely need stop signs, no questions asked. I'm Roy Wesley.
Does the city even have the right to authorize stop signs there since the street is not ours at the moment?
We did talk to the attorney on Monday, and he said, we can put this on the books, and then when it's turned over to us, it'll immediately become effective, so.
Okay.
You know, and right now, if we get an accident up there, even though the roadway isn't officially dedicated to the city yet, I know it's really close, we would still be taking the accident report up there and handling anything like that. So, the only thing we really couldn't do right now is write a stop sign violation up there, so.
Okay, so, you need directions, or what do you want on this one?
I will need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approved a two-stop sign on Hanson Court. They get installed once the, the street is dedicated to the city.
I'll second that.
Question, Mr. Woods.
Chief, do both of these locations meet the new criteria that you have in your policy?
Yes, they do.
Okay, that's it.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Another stop sign request, Pine Street.
Yeah, so the, the Arbor Woods subdivision over there, when Pine Street was completed and went through to Potter, from Arbor to Potter, that's currently an uncontrolled intersection. The vehicle's going northbound. They don't have the right-of-way, so they would have to essentially yield in an uncontrolled intersection to the Through Street. But, in talking to Public Works, you know, this is just one that, when the subdivision got finalized, it never was codified that they would want a stop sign there. So, right now, there's nothing. We think it's, it does fit the guidelines, and we think it's a, needed in that area. It would be a stop or a yield sign, but a stop is probably just the safest route to go, so.
Okay, Mr. Jacob.
Since that is in my ward, I've driven there, and I think we definitely need a stop sign there. One thing that we're going to have to, I'm not sure how we're going to handle, but the Bensonville Park District is putting a park a little further to the east of that. I don't know how that's going to affect, you know, like, are we going to have to have another stop sign there, or slow for, slow children, or we just?
I would say right now, the, the yield, the way they have, there's a yield sign over at Potter and Spruce over there that controls the intersection. We'll take a look at it when it goes in, but it seems to not be an issue right now, so unless something changes, I would say leave it as is.
And Bensonville Park District will be paying for that one if they want that. Okay. Oh, go ahead, Roy Wesley.
Have you, when was the last time the city's gone through all these stop signs? Years ago? Many years ago, if you wanted a stop sign, you go tell the police chief, I want a stop sign. But it never came to council or ordinances or anything else. Has there ever been a review on all the stop signs in the city of Wooddale, and have they been updated with ordinances? Because if there is no ordinance, and the council hasn't approved it, and the chief decides, I want a stop sign here, it's not legal.
So, we have gone through a lot of them. We just, probably a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, up on Elmhurst, there was a number of intersections that just had yield signs there, but they were in the code as needing to be stop signs. There was a couple spots that weren't in the code that we added to the code that should have had stop signs, that already had them. So, we've been trying to clean those up. Once the, once the 390 corridor goes through, we need a couple cleanups up on the central lively Edgewood area. So, at that time, we were going to kind of look and.
So, I guess my follow-up question would be on that. There are stop signs that have not been to the, to the city council at all?
No, I, I believe we've got all them. We'll go through it one more time, but I think we've identified most of those. We did have one that just came up this week, Arlene and Prospect, that there's no sign there. And we think that was one of them that, in the past, a sign was put up, and it was never codified, so it eventually got removed at some point. So, it was too late to put it on the agenda, but I'm going to be coming back with Arlene and Prospect also, so.
Okay, thank you.
But we, we looked for them, and I think, I think we've got most of them now. If any more, we'll go through it one more time and make sure.
You know exactly what I'm saying on that.
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Jacob.
Another stop sign that I wanted to ask about, Chief, and I don't know if we took a look, we had talked about this a while back, was on Edgewood and Ethel, where a lot of people were blowing that stop sign. Is that, the spot where that stop sign is, does that meet the requirements of a stop sign?
Yeah, I think what we looked at, because it was a little bit setback from the intersection, Matt, do you recall, I think we went, because we had done some enforcement down there based on a complaint. I'll take a look at it again, but I think we found out that the MUTCD, it did allow for that little bit of setback, but I'll take a look at that one again, so.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll make a motion, approve a stop sign on Pine Street.
Second.
And then, we have to do ordinance, or?
It'll be an ordinance, yeah.
Do it ordinance. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number D, I am requesting a deputy taken off the dais for tonight. for tonight. D? Item could be considered at future meetings. Item ordinance, October 22nd, squad car purchase, January 2016. Any other items?
Go ahead.
Alman Roy Wesley.
I don't know if it belongs on this one, on this, or it belongs on Public Works. In, in the rule of Jerry Greer, the past mayor of, passing away, I would like to look at making his street, whatever his street was at, commercial, and what street did he live on? Help me out.
I don't know. Oak?
I'm not, I'm not sure what street he was on for sure.
Okay. Whatever street it was, I think it was Oak. So I'd like to name it Jerry Greer Street. Basically, what they did for Bill Mayo on Prospect, is not change the name of the street.
Okay, could look into that. Any other item? Jacob.
I guess, asking the mayor, could we technically take off item D, the request for the R legal license?
Chairman has the right to remove anything off the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Am I right, Mayor?
It's not, it's not his, it's not his meeting.
I think so. I think it should've been done beforehand, but.
Okay. Anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Could we have a motion and a second? For what?
I made a motion to adjourn.
I didn't, I didn't hear it.
Peter's second, I believe. All in favor, it was aye.
If you didn't, you did.
Okay, whoever.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order, let the minute taker reflect that all the same members are here, and Alderman Woods has joined us.
No, we got you in already, 7:50.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of October 8th, 2015. Do I have a second?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Next, direction on the installation of streetlights on Lincoln Court. Mr. York.
Thank you, Alderman Woods. We were brought forward a petition about putting new streetlights in on Lincoln Court. We then sent out a survey, and the survey results were four yeses, three nos, and five no answers. At that time, we looked at some other options on, for doing a streetlight on Lincoln Court, and found that it was gonna be a challenge. So I'm asking you today for direction to say whether or not we should move forward with trying to figure out how to put a streetlight on Lincoln Court. So in your, in your packet, there's three options. One is, it ends here tonight with a no vote. Option two is getting an estimate from ComEd to provide a pole fixture and wiring. There is no overhead wires or city streetlights in the area, which is causing a little bit of a problem. Or to work with ComEd to establish a city-owned pole, and then do our own directional boring, and, and put a new light fixture in the cul-de-sac. So I guess that is the, that is a question that is in front of you today.
Should we call Roy back? It can't be more important than the council meeting.
Let's make a decision here. So, can I ask some questions? Why? Alman Eugene Wesley, feel free. So, there was something, they sent us letters saying they want a streetlight. Question is, what budget is coming out? Was there money left still for this one more streetlight? Because we did the three, or what, we moved over there?
South Cedar, yes. There was, there's money available in the, in the budget to do this, yes. The, the, the calendar of events that this brought forward was, there was a petition that was started by Alderman Catalano in his ward that, that brought forward to us in May. We sent out the request to them in June, and the results came back as stated in your, in your packet. So there is money, well, there's money available. Not knowing the exact cost of this project, because if it's a ComEd placed light, if it's us doing the light, I don't know, I don't know the exact cost, and that's kind of, I didn't wanna waste a lot of time trying to get that information if, if it was gonna be a no vote. I guess the reason why we brought it forward to you is because of the, the results of the survey are, are not overwhelmingly positive in either, on either side.
Okay.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So, I will make the motion to option number two, to at least get the cost of it with ComEd, and, and, you know, fix the wiring. I just wanna see what the cost is.
Yeah, I like the option three. The residents want lights there. I know overwhelmingly, they don't, you know, it doesn't show on the, on the survey, but a lot of the residents approached me because, you know, safety issues and safety concerns. And so I, I like the option three, and let's put, let's put a streetlight there.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Again, I don't, I don't care what option we choose, but until we see what the price tag is. And that's why I just said the option number two, get the cost and then come back to us. Because if it's over the budget, which it could be, the way costs are, then we need to budget it for next year. I just want to, I don't care if we go two or three, totally true. I agree they need a streetlight, they request it, no problem. Let's get the cost first before we vote. Go ahead, put it in. So we might have to budget it for down the line.
Alderman Sorrentino.
I appreciate what you're saying there, Alderman Wesley. And I think the only difference between two and three, they're both gonna be working up the numbers. The difference between two and three is, three's a city-owned pole, two is a ComEd-owned pole. But either way, numbers need to be established before we could vote on that. I'm all in favor of a city-owned pole's number, option three.
Mr. York.
And we can go through and get pricing on both sides, option two and option three. The option, the reason I gave different options is, moving forward, if it's a ComEd pole, and ComEd is required to maintain that pole, and make sure that light stays functioning. If it's a city-owned pole, then we have to provide the resources to keep that light functioning. So that's why there's two separate ones there. But if the, if the committee wants to move forward with, it's a yes vote for a light, okay, then we'll, we'll get pricing and bring it back at a future date.
Okay.
All right, so, so I guess there's a motion, right?
Yeah. I guess, I guess my, my thought would be to amend the motion to just getting multiple pricings.
No, one second. So then I will- So then I'll amend my motion and direct staff, or council to direct staff to get the op, the price for option two and three.
Second that.
I have a, Mr. York, so when we were talking about the speed bumps and getting a consensus, and, and Mr. Alderman Catalano said that everybody wanted it, although they didn't turn in a form or send back a thing. Just as a matter of policy, we should probably get those in writing. So if we get somebody to get the, so I'm not saying they don't want it, but just so that we don't in the future have, you know, 12 people and two people say yes, and the other ones didn't say anything, and they get speed bumps and lights and all that other stuff. So if we could just follow through with policy and get a majority of those people. It sounds like they're all interested. Tony, I'm sure could get a couple of signatures over there. Mayor please.
Actually, along those same lines, I remember we had the discussion on the streetlights, and that's when we put them in, the budget and everything, I think 25,000 a year. I believe I asked the question, well, how far do we go out? And I think I was told 250 feet or 300 feet. So you would only ask those six residents that are involved. Is that what we're still doing? I mean, it's, again, as long as we're following a specific criteria every time.
Yeah.
What is the criteria?
On this, on this block, what we did was, there is a streetlight at the corner of Welter and Lincoln Court on the north side of the street. So we did every, all the houses on south of, south of Welter on Lincoln Court. So the two houses that face Welter right there, we didn't put them in the plan because they have a streetlight adjacent to their house, or, you know, in the general vicinity. But basically, anybody on Lincoln Court was part of the, was part of the survey area, since this area did not have a streetlight at all. So I guess, what is the standard, and what do we use? I think there's a little bit of a gray area there. I wasn't privy to the 200 feet either side discussion, so what we tried to do is try to find, the South Cedar one was an easy one, because there wasn't any streetlights south of Spring Oaks, so that whole area got, got, got asked. So we're just gonna try to get the, the most people that are, we believe will be affected, not just, you know, the six houses on either side of the street.
Mayor please.
Right, that was way before your time, Matt. And again, just so we're following, you know, when, when somebody gets approached or whatever, we all have the same, all we gotta do is go, well, it's right here in this code, and we can cite it for them. It's cut and dry, it's clean. No questions answered, that may ask, I should say.
Yeah. We, we don't have a directive like that currently. I mean, that's something that we can come up with internally as staff, to come up with a directive.
Because what, sorry.
Mayor please.
Because what happened was, okay, I, I understand this is the cul-de-sac, and it's a dead end. But what was going on is, somebody wanted a light here on the north end of the street, all of a sudden, wait a minute, how come they got a light, we didn't get a light? So, you know, what is, I mean, Cedar is a good example. It was dark all the way, asked everybody, I got it. That's great, so that's the criteria. I would imagine that's our criteria, but I wanna make sure it's, it's all the same every time. I mean, there's quite a few streets, Hemlock, Ash, they're pitch black. All the streets are pitch black. I've had people ask me, I've told them, I go, listen, if you want a light, you have to get a few of your neighbors, and come to this, approach the city, send us a letter, we can take a petition. But, you know, at some point, those streets, I'm sure, are gonna come up again. They're, you know, at 6:30, 7 o'clock, it's already dark. So if they, they keep hearing lights are going in, they're gonna ask again, what is the criteria? So we're all, that's all.
Mr. York.
Yeah, I think something like this might, our discussion earlier this evening about the traffic complaints, I think this is basically the same type of scenario that we need to come up with. And we can work on something that has all the public works functions, sidewalks, streetlights, some other, whatever other criteria we can come up with and put, the things like, there needs to be a supermajority, you know, 60% and above of all, whatever, whatever we come up with to, to get these things moving forward, so that we know, that you guys know, and that the residents know, kind of what they're getting themselves into, and how they get what they, what they want.
Yeah, I was just, I just wanna throw one in there. So as long as it's consistent, is my only concern, and why we're at it. How long is that street? And could you put two on that street? Because if you engineer one, will somebody come back and go, well, hey, you never asked us. You just said at the end of the block, that didn't affect me. If you would ask me middle of the block, I think that street's like 600, right?
Yeah. The, the goal on that block would probably not to be put it at the end of the block on the cul-de-sac, but probably right at where the neck and the, the bubble starts, kind of right there, so it can shine out over the, over the cul-de-sac area as long, as well as up the, up the neck a little bit more.
So we'd never have a need for another?
Do it right the first time, you won't have to do it a second time.
Okay, thank you. Mayor please.
Again, I mean, with the lights, and Chief, I don't know, maybe you were the one that spoke on this, might even have been Chief Pinowitz back then, that's how far back this is going. I don't know, the lights have to be at least 350 feet apart, or was it 400 feet? And that's why, that's why they said, well, have 300 feet, you have these six houses, basically, each lot's 100 feet or whatever, these six houses, or eight houses, and one of them had to say, I'll host a light. And now, and, and from there, from wherever the hosting, that's where you had to go out, whatever, the 300 feet, and that's who got asked, or at least that's the way I understood it when we sat here, quite a, okay? It was, I know it was quite a while ago. So just so we're, we're doing it right, that's.
Alderman Jacob.
Quick question from Mr. York. I mean, how quickly could we get these estimates? I mean, what kind of timeframe are we talking to get estimates?
Mr. York.
Option three, I could probably get a partial estimate of that rather quickly, probably within the next two weeks. Working with ComEd, you never know. So I'd have to talk to our rep, and then go probably to New Business, and get the run around there a couple times. So I'm gonna guess, if I have it by the end of this calendar year, that'll be a miracle. Christmas miracle.
Alderman Catalano.
How much do we have in the budget for the streetlights? Do we allocate 50,000?
I don't have the exact allocations. I think we allocated a little bit more this year than we normally, I think it was 30,000, or maybe, yeah, we usually 25. This year, we added a little bit more, because we thought there was gonna, because we thought there was gonna be more people wanting streetlights. We haven't really gotten that pushed so far. So there'll be money out, money available for it, but I just don't have that number.
In an average streetlight, just an average, I know it's, you know, how much would that cost?
The ones on Itesca, I think were 7,000 apiece, or 7,000 for two of them, or something like that, so.
That's installed, right?
That's installed by ComEd. The ones on South Cedar, I think were around, I think it was 11,000 or 12,000. That was using our poles, but we had to do a bunch of directional boring, so there, there's a lot of variables involved.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Well, again, I have no problem doing this, but the point is, with the South Cedar, it's cost 11,000 grand a streetlight, like you said before, 7 grand. I don't think there's money in there to do it. First off, I don't think they're gonna have time to install this. So if we have to follow the next year's budget, there's much to be done. The way is, we need to get the price first, so.
Alderman Jacob.
If I'm not mistaken, weren't there some poles, like for, that we used, from Thorndale? Do we still have poles to use, or no?
Mr. York.
Yeah, there are a few poles left over there. But it's, the, the price, if it's our pole, the price is going to be in the hookup of the new ComEd line, the meter, probably some sort of cabinetry to get the meter in there, and then the directional boring from the current location to the new location, the installation of the pole. So the pole itself, whereas it's an expense, it's only a part of the problem.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe there was a motion and a second made on the options B and C. What I'd like to do is maybe move the rest of this to strategic planning, and consider lighting up what we can for the safety reasons of the city of Wooddale.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That carries. Moving along, don't move, oh, Mr. Mermis.
Real quick, I was alerted to a scribe error on the agenda. It says approval of the minutes for October 8th, but the minutes actually say September 10th, so the minutes are from September 10th, not approval of October 8th. It should be approval of September, oh, it's September 24th, my fault.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to correct my prior motion.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to correct my prior motion, that the secondor agrees to change the date from October eighth to, what was it?
September twenty-fourth.
September twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murmice. Keeping this on. Next, Matt, purchase of two international dump trucks. Take it away.
Okay, I'd like to ask, let me see, I got a little presentation here.
Oh, well, hold on a second.
Oh, you got a.
I, I missed Alderman, Roy Wesley had a question.
I'd just like to make a motion to purchase two two-and-a-half ton trucks, not sixty, three hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Second. Questions? No questions. Alderman Catalano.
This is in the budget?
Yes. Roll call.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino, Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes. That passes. Well, that was nice. Next, approval of Ward two, Phase three project design and construction management contract with Robinson Engineering in an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Yes, you may.
No question.
Is this the road sheet?
No, 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 no.
No. George?
The other side of the creek, Harvey and.
This is, this is the Forest View project.
Right.
This is Ward two, a better ward.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second. Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
That passes. Next, approval of Amendment Number five with H.R. Green for the Elgin-O'Hare Western Access Project to extend the agreement an additional six months and increase the amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
How, how much more are we extending this? I mean, can't we just do a roll around extension before? I mean, maybe I'm lost here, but I, I'll be here one sometime, though.
Mr. Murmice.
Yeah, this, this was a planned strategy. We talked about this before. We only do six months contracts with this, so as things progress, we can make some changes. But we may, we may renew it another two, three times before the project's over. But we've been renewing every six months from the start, and we've been under budget every time.
Do we have a first, do we have a?
Budget.
Yeah, the budget every year, and we're usually under budget on this, so.
Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
That passes. Next, approval of a letter of understanding between the Illinois Tollway Authority, DuPage County, and the city of Wooddale for snow plowing on the frontage roads of the EOWA. Mr. York, you wanna give us some?
Yes, thank you. This summer, we were in a meeting with the Tollway and their design firms. And the county was there and they, they asked us if we would be willing to take upon some of the plowing of the frontage roads. That frontage road segment would be between Central and Edgewood. The, the request came from the county because it's not affecting their plow routes. They go up and down Wooddale Road, but they don't go over towards Central. They don't go, they won't go on the frontage roads. So they asked us if we would take care of this, this issue for them, for this on past, or for this next winter. One of the things that had happened last winter was that we did do a small portion of it. And they asked us to do a little bit extended portion this time. Since the road is not completed yet and total finished, we did ask that we not be held liable if there was any minor damage that was performed from our snow plows on the frontage road, that that needed to be fixed at the Tollway's expense before being turned over to DuPage County. The, the frontage roads ultimately will be part, part of DuPage County's roadway plowing route. But just this year, they asked if we would take over the small, the small segment. It will not be, should not adversely affect our snow plowing operations within the Public Works Department. May take a little bit longer, but it's, it's an administrative amount and we'll be up there anyway, doing Edgewood and Central and, and Lively anyway, so.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
In the agreement, does it say anything about salting?
Mr. York.
No, it does not mention salting. It, it does call for snow removal. We will maintain the road like we would any other road. It's asphalt road, so the salt shouldn't have any effect on that. And when, like I said before, as long as there's no malice and willful forethought that us destroying their property, they will, they will make any minor modifications or, or cleanups to, to put the road back in its, as a present state.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
That wasn't my question. Question is, are we salting this or no?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a cost to us on this?
Yes.
Are they gonna reimburse us for the salt or, or are they gonna give us?
I mean, how much, I mean, how much are we talking here?
Um, I don't, I didn't calculate out how much salt we would use. Kind of depends on the amount of plowing events that would be on. But I think it was more of a government helping government interaction. And there was no, there was no, there was never a conversation about costs involved. We would be plowing it, we're not gonna charge them back for our plow times, and we wouldn't charge them back for our salt usage either.
In the, Matt, in the government helping government, how does that help us? What's the benefit to us? I see the benefit to the?
Well, the, the benefit for us is that those frontage roads stay open at the same rate that the rest of our streets stay open in that area. It could be coming to a point where we come up Lively, we, we're gonna be responsible for the turn on Lively and going forward up to the frontage road or the current Thorndale area now. If we didn't, if we didn't touch that road, then we would have traffic issues up in that area because other traffic would not be able to use that frontage road area to get to the businesses that, that had joined that frontage road. So I think it's just a safety reason for us to go up there and take care of that roadway while we're up there in the general vicinity anyway, and be able to keep the flow of traffic going. So that, I guess, is our benefit.
And the next question, so given, is it I DOD or the Tollway who wants us to, for everybody to reduce the amount of salt that we use, how does that affect? Obviously, if we take on more streets, then we're gonna use more salt. How does, how are they calculating the number if we're saving so that we're complying?
That is an interesting topic, and that we are currently in some baseline study modes right now, this winter, working with a consultant along with DuPage River, Salt Creek Watershed Network to, to calculate our baseline average of where we're at with salt usage. Obviously, the Tollway is supposed to reduce their chlorides. And while they aren't going to be real excited to do that, they're going to ask local municipalities to reduce our chlorides in the same watershed area. So we are going to be working with, with the D R S C W this winter to come up with our baseline so we can calculate some reductions and how we would like to reduce the amount of salt that we're using in town, where if it's through the use of liquids or specific spinner rates or, you know, per lane mile usage of salt, which will ultimately help us in applying for some grant opportunities from the Tollway Authority that we can hopefully get some new pieces of equipment to assist with the liquid disposal of, or disposal of liquid solutions on the roadways instead of just granular salt. So it's kind of an ongoing process. And being able to calculate our lane mile usage, and even if we add in this small segment here, we'll be able to redo, we'll be able to subtract that area out as we move forward with our calculations to, to show the benefit of this for the city.
Mayor please.
Didn't we have a discussion probably over a year ago, that we were gonna maintain some of these roads and there was gonna be a calculation? No, I think this was with the county, once the roads are all turned over and everything, right? Is that still happening? Is that?
Yeah, that's the north frontage road, is the one that we had the major discussion about. It's that north frontage road area. They are gonna continue, they're gonna plow that area this year because it's still gonna be part of the Thor, of Thorndale. So that's not gonna be, that's not on our plate right now. Just this area is, and that's why we were, we were approached to, to provide them with some assistance. So that other one, yes, that will ultimately be ours, and there'll be, have to be IGAs between us and I TESCA on how all that's gonna take place. But we're, you know, we're near finalization of that IGA, correct, sir?
No, the letter of understanding, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mayor please.
So this is just for this winter, correct?
Yes.
And then, because there was always question of who, who's salting the frontage roads and everything. And that was all part of the, because the county says, well, they're not ours. And there was some discussion, it was theirs, it's not our, you know.
The frontage roads are gonna be counted.
Somebody clear that up for me?
Mr. Merkhor.
Long, long term, the frontage road in this area will be DuPage County with the exception of the piece between the two legs of Lively Boulevard. So long term, once the main traffic from Thorndale is on the frontage roads, DuPage County is taking care of all of that section of the frontage road. Except for the north frontage road west of Middle Drive.
You got a quick file. Mayor please.
Except for Lively Boulevard, what do you mean? Except where? North and south, east and west?
Yes.
You lost me.
Lively Boulevard, south is.
On the south side of the bridge.
Correct. The portion of the frontage road that goes from, between the two legs of Lively Boulevard becomes city jurisdiction also, because of through traffic movement on Lively Boulevard.
So where, yeah, where's the, underneath the bridge to where it goes to the current Lively, there's that, that chicane through there? That'll be our responsibility, and that would have been our responsibility this year as well, so.
Alderman Jacob.
Along the lines of what the mayor was asking, we already know we're gonna eventually have to maintain the north frontage roads. Eventually, are we gonna be asked to do this, all of this, or?
No.
Mr. York.
All the frontage roads, except for the north frontage road between Middle and Salt Creek. The rest of them will be maintained by DuPage County. The only one we'll be responsible for is the north one, but we won't be responsible for it this year. It's still, it's still, well, it's still Thorndale. Okay.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I, I have a, I have a question. The one that you raised is, the one that you raised is that we want them to sign off that we are not responsible if we do damage that, that road. Tonight, on this document that is given to us tonight, I do not see any signature of anyone signing off on that agreement yet. So my question is, would they sign out on agreement with us first? Unless I'm missing it in the packet here.
On page one thirteen of the packet, there's a letter that was addressed to Chris Snyder and Jeff Murmice. But it, the signatory lines are Chris Snyder, Director of Transportation and County Engineering, and Anunziato Police, Mayor of City Wooddale, on page one thirteen of this letter.
Well, I don't have that one thirteen, I got one twelve. That's what you're referring to. A letter from Christopher?
Yes.
Okay.
To Mr. Snyder and Mr. Murmice. That's, the letter was originally, was originally sent to, we did change the, the signatory line to, for the mayor to sign off on it. And it's on this page of the document.
So what you're saying is that they already signed off on this and they waiting for our approval?
They're waiting for us to sign off on it and, and Chris Snyder with DuPage County to sign off on it. But they're, they're ready for us to sign off on it.
But again, so they asking out, so did they all, did Page County or they say, we are not responsible for the road? I, I just don't wanna give a signature here and then find out that, find out signature ain't done with this for damage to the road, is it, probably? I, I don't, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, this is, this is a form ready for the county to sign. So the county is waiting for us, for our signature on this so they can sign off on it.
But why would I sign?
I think he's asking, so is that verbiage that you said?
Yes.
Where we would not be held liable or responsible unless we did it maliciously for the?
Yes, it says to ensure.
Accidental repairs.
Yeah, it says to ensure the best ability that snow removal responsibilities do not result in accidental damage to the roadway or roadway apparatuses under the jurisdiction of other public agencies. However, the city shall not be responsible or have any liability of any kind of injury roadway, roadway apparatus resulting in the performance of his agent. Except for the extent of wanton willful acts, so.
But I totally understand it, but what I'm trying to say here is, and I see, my question is, we going to sign this off now? That it's made, but we don't have their signature. Because they are asking us.
They're asking.
So I'm signing, they asking us to do this without their signature, right now. So why?
But we're not gonna do it until we get their signature. It's their roadway. We're gonna help them out. We're not gonna.
They could be waiting for our final approval. They should have signed off on the agreement that, that, the way it was written. That's the way I look at it. It's the same thing with buying a house. We wanna make sure everything's there before you.
They're probably voting on it and signing simultaneously. I mean, that, that process is going on while we're doing our process. The, the signatures, as with a lot of the contracts, don't actually have to be all on the same piece of paper.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not a valid.
As long as you write verbiage in there.
Yeah, it's not a valid agreement until both, both parties sign. And we're, we're not liable to do that roadway until this letter is signed. So it's, it's in their best interest to have them sign off on this. And whether we sign off on it first or second, it doesn't really.
Was this turning to view already?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was reviewed by attorney.
By Eric?
Yes.
We didn't have a motion. Do we have a? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next items to be considered at future meetings, water skata October twenty-second, Edgewood sidewalks October twenty-second, Clarky mosquito contract November twelfth, self-treatment plant feasibility study to be determined. Is there anything else somebody would like to add, put on there? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
There's two questions. On the future items, do we, do we have any idea when the, the self-treatment plant discussion is gonna be? And then the other thing is, could we see the contract that county tried taking over the mosquito company? Could I make sure our people see what they proposed?
Mr. Murmice, you wanna take the first question?
Well, I can take both of them. The county abandoned their mosquito abatement thing because they didn't get good pricing, so it's mute, the point's mute. And then as far as the south treatment plant feasibility study, it's listed in here as a placeholder, and it's not even budgeted for. So I don't think it's coming anytime before we budget for it.
But.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
But the plan, if we are talking about CIP or student plan, I would assume that we're gonna have some type of take there for that. Because wouldn't that fall under that?
We still need a budget for it. Yeah, we're gonna talk about the timeline for it.
But have we reached out, have we reached out to the other towns?
Yeah, 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 you know that, I told you that.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm over.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Woods, if I could, before we adjourn.
Well, sure. Alderman Sorrentino.
I just wanted to bring to the attention of the council, the chief, I believe you're well aware of this, and the people at home. This weekend is.